Monday, March 7th at six sixteen PM. Okay, we're in the auditorium. And myself, Drake Waldron, and Dave Oliver. Dan Farley. Okay. Item number one is an RFP one four four SC one eight LBD lead based testing and consulting services. Vote to authorize the mayor to award lead abatement services for the Small Cities Grant Project to Atlas Technical Consultants LLC of East Hartford, Connecticut, as described in Atlas Proposal dated February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, for the cost described in the fee schedule on page five pending city council approval. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second discussion.
Yeah, just a brief filler. So we were using a company called Gilford Co.
Yeah.
They were a lead abatement which was used for Lisa Lo. They've gone out of business. And Peter Testa, I believe, was using the same company. So we had to find another one. So he reached out to Ken. Yes. To put it in the newspaper advertising. We only had one. But this was the one bid.
Yeah.
We've got seven projects, six projects moving forward.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure how many of them we want to make. But if they do, we need to have.
You need to.
No, in the past, we've never had official companies per se, unless it was then.
We did. We did, but it was it was a company that was selected by our small cities.
Coordinator.
Exactly.
Right, right, yeah. They handled it.
And in this particular case, Peter didn't have it once we asked.
Yeah.
Any to reach out. And that's I just thought it should come to small cities before.
Yeah, okay.
Because only because it is a small cities matter. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that's.
Exactly. All right, got it.
Do you want to just move it?
Any further discussion?
No.
No. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
There we go.
Anybody have any further business? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
That's my favorite motion.
Six nineteen.
So great, just to keep you guys updated, so.
Six thirty. So I am going to call the meeting to order. For the record, this is a regular meeting of the city council and WPCA. It is, as I said, six thirty PM. Today is Monday, March seventh, twenty twenty-two. We are in the City Hall Auditorium, and I just want to check to see if we have any council members participating via Zoom. We do not. So before we begin this meeting, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
Pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number one. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with section four E of the City Council WPCA meeting. Thank you, Councilor Oliver.
Second.
And seconded by Councilman Waldron. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are open to the public. Are there members of the public that wish to address the board? Yes, Sharon.
Good evening, Sharon Wagner, one seventy-eighth Circle Drive. I just I had a couple of things I wanted to share with you. First of all, as some of you may know, I'm on the Torrington Affordable Housing Committee. It's a temporary committee that was set in place last fall with Marty Connor's help. All of the communities in the state are required to file an affordable housing plan by June, I believe. And so we've been working diligently at this, and we've had a survey out. And I'm very happy to report that Torrington did an outstanding job of getting the word out. We've had over five hundred results to the survey, which is awesome. A lot of the responses were good ones. I mean, there was the lady who said, yes, she was leaving Torrington and leaving her husband here, but most of the comments were very positive. And so Wednesday night, we're having a virtual public meeting at seven PM, and we've been trying to promote it. And I went on to the city site today to see if it was on there. And the survey poster is up there on the front page. That's over, but we don't have the invitation to the public Zoom meeting. I did leave a message with Jeremy this morning, but I was not at home all day today. So Mayor, if you could help us promote that maybe on your page tomorrow. That would be awesome. And so there was that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was I am fully in support of a skateboard park in Torrington. I just don't think that Bessie Park is the correct place. I looked at the plans the other night and the way the skateboard park was in the layover, taking over the basketball and volleyball courts. We only have those volleyball courts in Torrington, and we have active volleyball teams in both our middle and high school. In order to do the skateboard park, you have to take those two courts up. Then we have to change the location of the basketball court and rebuild it again. There are offers for different locations on the books. I was at the Parks and Recreation Meeting the other day. It's not a done deal. There hasn't been no decision made about the park yet. And so my argument is that Bessie Park is a family oriented place. I think the skateboard park is an awesome addition to our community. I don't think it belongs right there on that corner. I think it's creating tightness in Bessie where Bessie has been beautiful and wide open at this point. There is a great location on Albert Street, thanks to ONG. That would be a great site for the skateboard park. It would be able to be patrolled and be secure, and the funding is present to make that move. The other suggestion is to put the skateboard park into storage and potentially think of maybe the space behind the Torrington Armory, because that might accommodate that. Thank you. Thank you. Still open to the public.
Good evening, this is Robert Clark. I live on Horrible Bark. First of all, kind of to reiterate, I'm a huge proponent of the Torrington Skate Park. I currently work as a safety and security associate at the high school and know many students who enjoy utilizing this facility. I would estimate that roughly ninety-five percent of the children and adults that use the facility do so in a safe and respectful manner. However, I am concerned with the proposal to move the skate park closer to Bessie Park for three reasons. First, there's been a history of unsafe behaviors and incidents that have occurred over the years at the skate park. Again, I'm not referring to the overwhelming majority of children and adults who act responsibly. These incidents have included illegal drug use, physical altercations, excessive foul language, property destruction, including a porta john being lit on fire just this year, and injuries due to not wearing proper protective equipment. Second, moving the park to the volleyball courts would reduce the usable facilities our residents enjoy by getting rid of the volleyball court, which is often utilized in the fall, spring, and summer by many of our residents. Third, I believe there are multiple better locations, which I will explain in further detail. On February twenty-second, it was stated that the Parks and Rec Department had already voted to move the skate park to where the volleyball courts were and that the skate park had to stay on Bessie Trust grounds. However, I'm slightly confused by this statement. After talking to other member to others that attended the Parks and Rec meeting on Wednesday, March second, it was stated that by the Parks and Rep Commission that they had searched for numerous locations all over town for a new location, that they had not yet voted on the new location and that the park did not need to stay on Bessie Trust property. I've heard that ONG offered to give the piece of land to house the skate park in town, but I also know of another location that may be of even greater value to Torrington residents, which was also alluded to before. Behind the armory exists an old tennis court. This location is already contained on two sides and would be an amazing spot for the skate park location for three main reasons. First, it is located in close proximity to the Parks and Rec offices. Therefore, for maintenance or for supervision, it's close to there. Secondly, it's within walking distance of the Torrington Teen Center, which is just probably about a four minute walk down a side street. Third, it's also easily patrolled by TBD. I personally know many students who go to the Torrington Teen Center every week who would absolutely love to be able to walk less than four minutes away to enjoy a skate park facility near the Armory slash Houston Beach Park. In conclusion, it sounds like the location hasn't been finally determined yet by Parks and Rec, and that it doesn't need to stay on Bessie Trust property, which gives the town options, which is good. And there are two other suitable locations, including the land set aside by ONG as well as behind the Armory at the old tennis courts. Finally, moving the skate park next to a basketball court, playground, town pool, main road, and pond will only increase the likelihood that poor behavior choices or illegal activity will take place in close proximity to young families and children as past history has shown by the small minority of children and adults who do not behave responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clarky. Still open to the public.
Mario Longfuko, forty-four twenty Farm Lane. I'm not going to talk about the skate park. What I am going to talk about is the perception that this is a building committee versus a park and rec thing. It's not. Simply stated, the people on the building committee have an opinion, just like everyone else, that the best location is not where it's proposed to be. We don't intend on fighting wherever you decide to put it. We're stating our opinion. We're building a premier facility there, but more importantly, for the reasons that others mentioned, with the mix of older youths at the skate park versus the younger kids at the rest of the facility. So for the record, I do I did drive behind Fuchsia's Park the other night as well. It is a good looking facility. It seems like an option, but I guess it's ultimately up to park and rec and you guys. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Still open to the public. Last call. Thank you. Moving into item number two, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from February twenty-second. Thank you, Councilman Armond, and I heard Councilman Waldron. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries.
Oh, for the record, an abstention is to Councilman Oliver.
Mayor, I have a question or order?
Yes.
I would like to introduce a new agenda item to tonight's meeting for the purpose of having the city council express its views on the location of the skate park. Clearly, it's risen to the level of 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 an issue within our community. And I think city council members, while we don't have final say or jurisdiction over this, I do think as elected officials, I would certainly like to understand how the rest of the council feels about this. And I think elected officials who are here to represent the people of Torrington, I think our just I think our feelings on this issue should factor into the final decision. So the motion would be to add a discussion item for the purpose of discussing with the council the location of the skate park in Torrington.
Okay, so to to the point, the motion is to add an agenda item, as stated by Councilman Cavanaro. I need a second, and then to add it to the agenda, two thirds vote. So is there a second?
I mean, I'll second it.
So seconded by Councilman Oliver?
And then we'll vote on it.
Yes. I'd like a roll call vote, please, given.
Roll call vote to add it to the agenda.
Let's not be sure. Yes.
Yeah.
If it's under discussion at this point, I said my only objection is really the twenty-four twenty-four hour notice of any items added. And I don't know that that pressing that we could possibly add it to the next agenda for our next meeting. I will oppose it mostly because I'm a protocol person. And I respect, you know, your interest in adding it. But if we allow this at this point to be added, I'm comfortable supporting it. But I would support it being added on to the next agenda if it's not a.
This just bubbled up really quickly. And I thought I'd get this. I'm not sure. I'm not sure if they're.
I just I just want to say that wouldn't it be beneficial to give the public notice? Because if we're going to discuss a topic that may or may not be controversial, then we might get more feedback.
Yeah.
Just just throwing it out there.
No, I just wasn't sure if there was a timeline in place where the council's input needed to be appraised quickly.
So if the thought process is that this discussion would inform the Park and Recreation Commission in their decision, I believe their next commission meeting isn't until the, is it the first Wednesday of? Okay, Cece, here. First Wednesday of April. So there would be ample opportunity to make an agenda item with public notice.
Having, okay, having said that, I will amend my motion to add this item to the next city council meeting.
Absolutely. All right. All right, the same with your second?
Yeah, absolutely, I'm in.
All right. So, yes, we can absolutely make sure that this goes on the next agenda item opportunity for everybody to come prepared to speak. Yes.
I would rather request a roll call vote then.
Okay. All right. No, I appreciate that, and I appreciate the process freaks in the room, so. All right. Thank you very much, Councilman.
I hope I'm not alone in that. We're going to vote on this motion to add it to the agenda.
We know you read like.
So you don't.
No, I don't need to.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll just make it a an agenda. And Heather, you can make a note of that, so it's. She's already building the agenda for next the next meeting. Okay, so item three, moving into item three on the agenda. I will entertain a motion by the city council here and acting as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from Fund Number four ninety, Sanitary Sewer Capital Improvement, to Wright Pierce Engineers of Boston, Mass. For four thousand one hundred two dollars and eighty-six cents for invoice number two one seven six nine three and two thousand three hundred seventy-eight dollars and sixty cents for invoice number two one eight four zero six.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the Small Cities Committee to authorize the mayor to award lead abatement services for the Small Cities Grant Project to Atlas Technical Consultants LLC of East Hartford, Connecticut, as described in Atlas Proposal dated February seventeen, twenty twenty-two, for the cost described in the fee schedule on page five.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Minichia. Questions on this motion?
You need a.
Yeah, do you want to? Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about.
Yeah. Okay, so we had a meeting, quick meeting beforehand, and this is we are officially naming this company to be the our lead abatement. There's no representative in the past, the Small Cities Coordinator just used somebody that we won't, you know, we just trusted them. I guess whoever they had in the past has gone out of business.
They have.
So this time, we wanted to make it official. This is the company we put out an RFP, but only one company submitted a bid. So it's acceptable. I would recommend we accept it.
What he said.
Other questions?
Two.
Other questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I will entertain a motion to release the sewer liens in Corporation Council's member memo of March seventh, twenty twenty-two, regarding the release of liens.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions on the motion or the memo? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated in the list dated March seventh, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman Minichia. Questions on the motion or memo? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendations of the tax collector and authorize the sewer usage refunds indicated in the list dated March seventh, twenty twenty-two.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
I'll second it.
And seconded by Councilman Minichia. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved. Second.
Councilman Minichia, seconded by Councilman Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ray is here this evening. Anything to add this evening?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Well, for those of you. My previous position, my favorite topic was sewage. In my current position, my new favorite topic is trash. So, so, you know, we've been kind of talking at council meetings and updates, and we're getting a little bit of a clearer picture as to, you know, you know, what the conditions are. You know, we've all read the articles about Mira and, you know, you know, what's happening with Mira and the contracts they're trying to gather and put together for the disposal of Connecticut's trash over the next five years. For those of you familiar, the city is a long term contract with Mira for disposal of waste. That contract carries through for fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. So in that contract, there is a opt out clause that if the community does, if the tipping fee is set above the opt out level, then the municipality or the community has a right to terminate the agreement and to, you know, use fine services elsewhere for the disposal of trash. So on February twenty-third, Mira in their Board of Directors meeting, set their tipping fee for fiscal. It's kind of a two tier. So what they're doing is they're changing in the amendment amendment two, which they issued and requested the municipalities execute. They are resetting the opt out tip fee levels in their letter requesting that setting the tipping fee because they're required to notify the municipality. So if we were to remain as a long term under the existing contract, which gives us a much lower opt out threshold, the tipping fee for twenty-three is a hundred and sixteen dollars per ton. If we elect to execute the amendment number two and become a short term member, then the inclination to that is, I think you probably all can see the writing on the wall because the obligation is to fiscal year twenty twenty-seven. It's probability that Mira won't exist past twenty twenty-seven. So if we execute the agreement, which adjusts the opt out tip fees, fiscal year twenty-three would be a hundred and eleven dollars, twenty-four, hundred and twenty-four dollars, twenty-five, a hundred and thirty-one dollars, twenty-six, a hundred and thirty-six dollars, and twenty-seven, a hundred and forty-one dollars. So what does that mean? So looking at where we are, all things, things being static. The current, the first completed year of fiscal year twenty-one is disposal fees were one point two eight million dollars. All things being equal with the proposed tipping fee in amendment number two, in fiscal year twenty-seven, the tipping fees for Mira would be two two million ten thousand dollars. So or increase of just over seven hundred thousand dollars. projecting that out for the entire program, that's collections disposal as well as, you know, bulky waste and other programs. For fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the total cost for our municipal solid waste and recycling program was three point six four million dollars. Exercising amendment number two with Mira had indicated the disposal fees over two million dollars. That and other things being static, as in tons, the program cost would be four point six million dollars. So that's over the next five years, on average, two hundred thousand dollar increase per year for to continue with the way that we're kind of doing things now. So, you know, I mean, we're looking, we've talked about, you know, various things that we're doing. We're looking at every possible program. We're looking at organics wastes. We had indicated that twenty-five to thirty percent of the weight, since we're charged by weight of MSW is organics. Can, you know, looking at programs to source separate that and send that to a composting facility in Southington Quantum Bio Power. The estimated typical disposal fee for organics is between forty-five and sixty dollars per ton. So we're also looking at a pay as you throw program, you know, where the, those who've been around, you understand what that program is. Looking at source separation, can we source separate glass? There's been some work with using crushed glass in an aggregate mix in concrete. So, you know, that's being explored. Obviously, you know, you're familiar with what we've talked about in recent meetings in regards to our push to improve our recycling rates and educating our residents and, you know, getting our schoolchildren involved in educating their parents into improve our recycling. So I think one additional number I want to put at you or a couple additional numbers. So we have about fourteen thousand three hundred ninety-six gallon waste receptacles out there. For twenty twenty-one, the average pounds per household was one thousand nine hundred and ninety-four pounds. And a typical Torrington, based on the demographics, is two point three, two point three five people per house. So that's almost a ton of trash per house. That's just not sustainable. And, and, you know, I think you all understand that we need to do something. In twenty twenty-one, the average cost that the city paid for collection and disposal for each trash container was two hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Based on the projections throughout two twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's we're looking at per container, not per house, is three hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. So, you know, I wanted to do is kind of give you kind of a synopsis of where we are, where we're moving, where we're, you know, looking at additional disposal options, you know, what other companies out there can provide disposal solutions. So and then as well as looking at how to get organics out, how to improve our recycling, looking at other ways to reduce the tonnage of trash that we generate. Our numbers are high. So it's kind of really what I just kind of wanted to kind of give you a brief update. So on a little bit of good news. We have to have some good news. So you know, as of February first, we required the residents to register for bulky waste pickups. So here's, I know it's only a month, and people are still getting used to the new program. So but for the first seven months of this fiscal year, our average number of mattresses per month is three hundred and ninety-two. In February, we collected eighty.
Yeah.
For tonnage, for the same seven months, our average tonnage collection was ninety-one point six five tons. In February, we collected fourteen point four five tons. Costs are for seven months, our average cost per month was eight thousand sixty-five dollars. Our cost in February was one thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars. So, so I understand it's just, it's a quick stamp shot, but the numbers are promising. People are adjusting, they're they're kind of getting the message message out. We, you know, it's on our website. It's easy to contact Linda and, you know, fill that permit. easy to, to contact Linda and, you know, fill that permit. Our, our hauler, which is USA Waste Hauling, has been super accommodating. They're actually, if in their routes, if they see a house that isn't on the list to be collected, but there's bulky waste out there. So we provided them with door hangers. So they hang it on the, the door of the household, basically explaining them to, you know, call engineering or go online, fill out the permit. We've, we've set the permit online. You know, you fill it out online, you hit submit, it automatically goes to Linda's email. She gets it the next morning. She gives you a call. She verifies, you know, all your information. And then she sends the list to USA for scheduling pickup. So that's, that's kind of where we are. And there's another little, just a little tidbit. We had talked about, we believe that our system was being abused. We had gotten a call from a resident wanting to know what to do with their bulky waste. Told her that, you know, got to fill out the permit and then we'll schedule the pickup. And so then her comment is, how often can I do this? And the response was, well, you can do it as many times as you want. And the impetus of her question was, because my landlord brings stuff all the time. Guess where her landlord lives?
Brooklyn.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. So just to give you a brief, brief, you know, update of where we are. Our intent is to come back to you in two weeks and request some more defined direction and in, in, you know, one, how we're going to do, deal with Mira. So we have 30 days to exercise our opt-out option. And that clock started ticking on the third. The, the date, we have 30 days from the date we received their notification of the tip fee. So we have till April 2nd to make a decision on what we're going to do in regards to our disposal options. So I will entertain any questions, any council.
Councilman Kevin, you have a question?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation and the update. Are there, these problems obviously don't exist, you know, in a, in a silo in Torrington. Are there any regional or state-directed, you know? Is this problem being looked at at a state level or?
Yes, I mean, it, it is statewide. I know the mayor, myself, Linda, and, you know, several other members of, of my staff have attended. They have many different programs. We, we were at workshops for organic waste. You know, it's a statewide issue. Pay-as-you-throw, EPR for packaging, trying to get legislation to, for manufacturers to reduce their packaging. So, yeah, it is actually driven initiative out of deep.
Do you sense, do you get a sense of urgency?
I, I, I think it's, yeah, it, it is.
From, from these departments, from at the state level?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, the, you know, one of the things we're, we're looking with deep is they have been approved for grant funding for, to pilot many of these types of programs. So they're, they're piloting right now. Meriden is doing a co-collection with pay-as-you-throw and organics, organics.
Yeah.
That was partially grant-funded by, by deep. This is in their second, second round of grant funding. So they have, you know, the legislature has funding to deep.
Okay.
And I just want to comment, and I'm trying to think how many years ago Torrington really was trying to get ahead of this, you know, early on, and a large presentation and potential contract, you know, to deal with our waste differently and probably received some of the largest public comments other than your other sewer problems than we've ever had. And, you know, unfortunately, it was, you know, not accepted by the community as an alternative. And here we are. So I do really believe that we need to look at the alternatives, whether it be, and I, I know I'm trying to think of the woman who was with you at the last meeting.
Kristen Brown.
She was amazing in terms of, you know, educating more about recycling. But I do think that, you know, if we had gone where, I mean, could have, should have, would have, I guess. But here we are today with really a crisis and every article that I've read. And sometimes, you know, not always the facts are right, but it's, it's a pretty frightening crisis, I think.
Well, when you, when you think that each 96 gallon container, on average, is collecting almost a ton of trash a year. That's unheard of. I mean, I don't, I mean, no, you know, the council or anybody else's trash generation, but in my house, I mean, I'm lucky if I have one bag, two bags per week at the most. I have a 96 gallon, I could probably use a 25 gallon container. So
So wouldn't you say the average is skewed? Don't you think the average is skewed by those people who are?
Oh, sure. But if you take all 14,000 that are out there, you know, like some are probably two tons.
Right.
You know, I mean, your household might be 400 pounds.
Probably 200. I'm a good recycler. I learned our parents who are recyclers all the time, whether it be jars or cans or.
I mean, you know, nationwide, I mean, if you look at, you know, communities that have really good recycling programs and really good programs, you know, a typical household, you know, single-family home is probably likely should be in the range of 300 to 400 pounds.
Great. As far as those containers, right? Is, is there, are there any control can get for households? I mean, what are the rules?
So we are, we are looking now, right now, the rules are you can purchase on an annual basis, an extra container.
Because we sold my mother's house, you know, over the summer, you know, and it was to New Yorkers, you know, it was from Brooklyn. And I've noticed in driving by and just checking things out, what used to be two, six of them there, right? And literally no one is living in the house at this point. So, you know, all over the city. And we have, we have no, we have no way.
I've seen people drive up in pickup trucks and empty black trash bags in other people's trash containers.
Yeah. But i- is there any way that, that we could impose, you know, again, there's some way we can monitor that relationship of how many residents in a household for, for?
You know, I mean, directly, we could put, you know, by ordinance, each residential unit gets one trash. But there is the option that they can purchase on an annual basis, a second trash can or a third.
Well, maybe that's. It's where the control should come in, shouldn't it? I mean, you know, I mean, a lot of kids.
Yeah.
But beyond, I mean, common sense would be, no, you don't, too, there should be a real spike in, in what we charge or whatever, there should be some control there.
A pain threshold.
I think that would be popular in this town because the vast majority of people, I think, are like you and me and, you know, that that container is more than adequate and people are abusing it clearly, you know.
You know, the other thing that we, we've, we've been discussing is to looking at, I mean, our program allows for 48, 64, and 96. Do we, you know, could, do we make our base 148 gallons? And then if you want a 64, then you pay X, just, I mean, I mean, for the first one.
I think those are all valid questions.
You want a 96, you pay an exponential number more.
In, in our ordinance and really get strict about this.
Try and squeeze the problem and, you know, start filtering out where one, the abuses are the unnecessary. A 96 gallon trash can, you know, it's as big as this, bigger than this podium. I can put the podium in it. You know, I mean, it's, to me, it's an invitation to throw whatever you want in it. You throw broken up sheet rock, you throw wood, you throw, you know, cut up carpets, you can throw anything you want in it. That's a big container.
Yes, it is.
Go ahead. Yeah, just one. It was, I can't remember exactly what meeting it was, was maybe a few months ago that you had, who was the other lady that was with you again?
Linda Orr.
There was a statistic that came out and the, the woodwork that was shocking to me that we're at about 30% recycling rates here at the, in the town.
Well, we're historically about 20.
It's crazy to me because I think I would rather recycle pickup once a week than trash. Cycle bin is full constantly.
Yeah.
I didn't realize how rare I actually was.
Yeah. So we've, we've been having that discussion. You get to a point where you flip them. If you can get your recycling rates up and then you flip them and so trash then becomes bi-weekly and then.
Going with this is if we have people putting, you know, cut, cut up two-by-fours in there, stone materials or building materials that can't be recycled, that's one thing. I don't know if those things could be prohibited or cracked down upon.
They are prohibited.
But it, it happens anyways, kind of like people coming out from Waterbury to put their trash in our trash cans. But I mean, it does make sense for us to pursue recycling as an option to get tonnage down, correct? Because if we're at 20 to 30%, wouldn't we then?
And there wasn't a point, well, I mean, it's still in our contract, so that if the, the ACR, which is the aggregate commodity rate for recyclables
Yeah.
exceeds what the base processing fee is, we would get a rebate.
Okay. That would be helpful.
So can we also add this on to, not only the agenda for the next meeting, but also for ordinance? It's going to request the meeting for March 21st. Vic was able to send out to members of the ordinance committee a lot of information for, you know, for us to begin to look at. So we may be meeting a little more regularly. I don't know if, just as a discussion, are starting planning to have that added to the agenda?
No, I, I do, I, I, I concur wholeheartedly with what you're saying is, is a full ordinance review and a tightening of the, you know, what's allowable, what's not. And, you know, because in our ordinance, it sets the fee for the additional container. So, you know, looking at that. And that's been something that we've been trying to pursue is, you know, what language should we suggest and in the ordinance? So I, I think that's a fantastic idea.
I mean, there are other items that will be on the agenda from our Sargent office, right?
The, so I'm sorry, Councilman Minichi had commented.
Yeah, I, I agree with everybody up here. I, I mean, four people live in my house and we have one bag of a kitchen bag garbage full a week. And our recycling is full
Yeah.
every week. So, so I would like to see that flip-flop. But I think we're going to have to do this, obviously, in a, in, in, in different facets to conquer this problem, right? So I think it'd be beneficial for all of us to see how that would work. And probably some would be immediate, some would be like phasing in, depending on what's going on with the state and what they're
Right.
doing with all the, you know, the recycling and, and, and the different, you were talking about the concrete use of glass, things like that. So it would be good to see a visual of that. I'm very visual. And I think, you know, it would help everybody else, but I, I, I like where you're going with all this and I think we really need to crack down on it.
I can send you as many graphs and charts.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I think the only other thing that I would add to Ray's commentary is for those members that were here when we brought up the unit-based pricing or pay-as-you-throw and how how unpopular the proposal was, there was a very comprehensive slide PowerPoint presentation that actually showed a projection of where we were going to be if we didn't do something immediately. Everything she said, everything Kristen Brown said was going to happen, has happened and is going to continue to happen. But what we also recognize, the conversations that Ray and Linda and I have had is that bringing back a solution for only a part of this problem isn't enough. So to Councilman Minichi's request, you know, it's unit-based pricing, it's organics, it's getting the glass out of the trash. It's maybe working with somebody who, for a lot of people that are still throwing away those redeemable bottles.
Yeah.
You know, they're going in a recycle bin, you feel good, you recycle them.
Yeah.
But that nickel is sitting in a fund in the state. And, you know, we're not seeing any of that. So those are the things that Ray and Linda have been working on. We've had a few meetings. We must make a decision on the 21st with regard to the Mira opt-out option. And then going forward, I think you're right. I think this is going to have to be a conversation every meeting or every month until we find out what's, what we're comfortable with.
Yeah.
I'd appreciate if we can get, I mean, clearly the ordinance committee, we've done other things with ordinance and it's always helped and beneficial if people who already have back and give us like some examples of, you know, what you think are, you know, just something to work off of.
Right.
Because we're not re, trying to reinvent the wheel here. I mean, other, other municipalities probably have something like what we're talking about already in place. If you can find, direct us to any of that, you know.
Yes.
I'm, I'm thinking specifically of the one problem which seems to be really solvable, like, you know, also gets one, you know, one recyclable, one regular one, and then boom, you are going to pay a fee for a second one, an ongoing fee, not just the one time only. I'm, I'm sure they must exist out there.
And when we talk about flip-flopping, the percentage of recycled material, what we also know is we are just minutes away from now having to there's no market out there for it. China isn't buying our recyclables anymore.
Yeah.
There's limited market for it. So, so this really does have to be everything, changing behaviors, advocating for, I was just pulling up Katie Dyke's, who is the commissioner from deep, who has really put this on the front burner, holding manufacturers accountable for their packaging, you know, reducing the amount of packaging that comes. So it's, it's really a lot of discussion that some of it can be solved here on the local level. Much of it is solved at the state level and then even nationally, I think. So grateful for the work that Ray is doing on this because we're hitting a brick wall fast. I, I use the term crisis. I used it last fall. I used it again last month. It is.
Yeah. When you, when you start thinking about that, you know, the trash is right around 6% of the city's budget?
Yes.
Yeah. It's a big number.
And we're looking at 3.6 million last year and we're potentially looking at 5 million, 5 million plus if we don't do something.
Yeah. Thank you, Ray. And we will, we'll put this on the agenda for the 21st, have further discussions and what are those implementable programs, you know, the, the quick and easy ones that will start to steer behavior and what are those more painful, longer, longer term?
And as always, Councilmen or Councilwomen, if you have any questions or you want any data, just reach out to me and give me a call, shoot me an email. I would be happy to send you the scores and scores and scores of data that I have.
Thank you, Ray. All right. Any other questions?
Your department's creating the problem.
Trash like some, always in the gutter.
You didn't really say that. Dan, anything from the treasurer's office? Do you want to update on our bonding situation?
Thank you.
So I've completed all my work that needs to be done for our next bond sale. But we've But we've got, we ran into a small issue, our, our auditors haven't finished the audit yet. Or actually, they just sent us our first draft on, was it today?
I thought it was Friday, I saw it Friday.
Friday, so that just came through. So, the, the problem is for the official statement, which is what I prepare for Standard and Poor's, and they give that to all the investors that'll be bidding on these bonds. Without the audit being complete or part of that official statement, it brings a lot of uncertainty to those investors about what's going on. And of course, with uncertainty, that brings risk. And with risk, we're talking about money. So, um, I had a conversation with Bill Lindsay, our, our advisor, and, uh, he suggested that we have a call, we got together with Sandra Dawson, the mayor, Robin and myself, and we thought it best that we postponed, that we postponed the sale for thirty days because it's going to give us time to complete that audit and get it done. It, it won't impact us financially at this point, so that's where we're at.
Questions for? Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, um, this bonding round also includes school construction funding. So, um, obviously, we're paying very close attention to what those interest rates, what the potential premiums are for those bond sales. And Bill Lindsay has been doing a great job and giving us some pretty good advice, so. All right, um, we have, um, on the call, Mr. Towsey from WPCA.
Hi, Mayor, how are you? Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you, Ed. Um, and Rista is, um, also, um, on this call.
Hi, good, good evening. I just wanted to give a quick update on our, um, ARPA proposed, um, strategic plan. Over the past two weeks, we put out a survey on a Google forms and we've done a lot of outreach, um, to try to get people to take the survey. As of four-thirty tonight, there were a hundred and fifty responses. And I think very valid and, and great responses. So, the, where we are right now is I think we're going to keep the proposed, the survey open for one more week, continue with our outreach to, uh, collect that data and then, um, as a committee, review the data, see if there's any adjustments based on the input that we received and, um, send that back to you for review and hopefully, um, approval at your next meeting so that we can start to move forward on some of these initiatives. And if there was any questions in the meantime, I would be happy to answer them or any other input on the survey.
We didn't really get a chance to respond to that survey. I know there was a hiccup, I think, um, Sharon Wagner, um, called when she was trying to access it. So, there was a hiccup in the, um, first release, but we've since fixed it and I think, um, with a hundred and fifty responses, it, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty good beginning.
Yeah, the survey was down, I think, just for a few hours overnight. I checked it at six o'clock at night and it was there and when I came back at seven-thirty the next morning, it, it was gone. So, it was only a few hours overnight, uh, but it's been back up and, and running since.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Rista. All right, there being, anything from the city clerk's office this evening? Nothing, Corporation Council?
Uh, only to say that tonight, uh, or actually tomorrow is my trash pickup day. And I was lazy enough not to bring the container down because there's only one little small bag and I said I could wait until next week, so that's how I'm helping on the project.
Thank you.
You can put my little small bag in that, then we'll both wait till next week. All right, there, then let's move into item nine, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by mayor and members.
Some of.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, seconded by Councilwoman Rowett, all in favor? Any opposed, starting from my left, Councilman Oliver?
Uh, nothing this evening, Mayor, thank you.
Your Councilman Kevin Arrow.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to circle back to the beginning of the meeting. When I asked to add the agenda item tonight, um, for the skate park review, there, I had a motion on the floor to have the city council approve it and then I withdrew the, uh, the vote as a roll call vote, but not the motion itself. That was not my intent. So, just for the sake of, people who are here tonight, at the next meeting, I know we've already added another big item to the agenda. Can we, because people are going to want to notify their various constituencies to come to this, that will absolutely be on the agenda.
It will be on the agenda and we'll do it early in the agenda so there'll be.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right, um, Councilwoman, we're rolling.
I just mentioned, um, based on the need for ordinance committee to meet, um, so if we could do that on the twenty-first at six, that's going to be enough time at least.
You think that's going to be enough time?
I know, okay, five-thirty, I'm good.
Five-thirty, okay.
Almost everybody should retire. We used to be when Frank did it at six, so. You, you're retired.
Yes.
So, the other request I have since, uh, Public Works is if we could get that clock fixed, I mean, I'll, I'll pay for the battery. I'll actually even pay for our new clock, I know that's on public record now, but I, it just makes me crazy, so. You called me something else earlier in the meeting, but, you know, having to do with, uh, procedures, but I do, uh, with that request is. It's been that all, all night, so. And the other thing I just wanted to announce is Darlene Battle, Battle has her little art show, you know, right here on Main Street, night until nine o'clock. And it's Taquana's, uh, little soul food restaurant, that's right next to the old towers. And, you know, it was very sweet, so, um, welcome anybody to sort of go and, and visit her art.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Menichia.
I just want to second that about the, uh, the art show, it was great, uh, my wife bought a piece down there, so, uh, it's good stuff. Till nine o'clock.
Jeez, she's got a nice marketing firm. Councilman Waldron.
Nothing for me, Mayor, thanks.
All right. All right, then, uh, I, um, seeing, no, excuse me, item ten, I will move into item ten. I'll entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public, uh, to comment on agenda items only.
Move.
Thank you, Councilman Kevin Arrow, seconded by Councilman Oliver, all in favor? Any opposed? Agenda items only. Comment. I'll move into item eleven, there being no further business before the board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second, Councilman Oliver, seconded by Councilman Menichia, all in favor? Any opposed or adjourned?